This conference will now be recorded.
The spirits have been a wonderful city council meeting, especially on efficient and well-known issues like every word, every idea that is suggested, not only that in order to determine the worst time you get into actions that will honor you and let citizens of our square, but with Jesus' name in forever they can.
I agree.
That was annoying because it took me on a Thursday going off like Thursday. You mentioned you have programs on Thursday, you think you're sure?
Well, that's right. Right. One, four, three, you can give away yes sir.
What? Let it go.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on. What? This is not an opportunity for the citizens public to address the city council on any issue that's not on the agenda, so we can't. All right. I'd like to address the city council for your understanding of what we're talking about. Do you want to like stand and address the city council? Please step to the podium and take a moment.
We know we have a good trend. People set this up on a better version. Yeah, I think I'm going to, um, so we've got rolling for our apps, probably on Friday night, uh, and it's just kind of progressive work. I've been waiting to see if there's something that's happened, if it's not happened, uh, it's become more certain now that happened, uh, we had to wait across the street, like sidewalk back at the other side of the property. And I think it's going to make progress there in my driveway, the tire and the scooter fall on one of these, and he's got a family car in my driveway, fortunately. But, uh, then fortunately this past week, we had a ground street, uh, had the family, visitors coming to visit, so we set up a bar, medical, so it's now becoming something cities can look at. So I took the litterings, uh, taking some pictures, uh, taking pictures, uh, you know, basically I got four or five come over from thirty-three inches long to eight inches deep rebar showing, uh, you know, we're just seeing worse, worse, wind's coming, uh, you know, we're, we're still about coming through, breathing water, you know, all that's true to do, I didn't there, and he seemed a little bit, and multiple times walking. So, uh, but it would be easier, you know, uh, so it becomes more of a, not just, uh, you know, a small issue, but it's now a concern, uh, now a bad one. From people, you know, from the streets, so, uh, I know when things come up with the city, that I have to fix my sidewalk, city council timeline on me, that's why I got this product, so I'm hoping, I'm not, you know, after things, not on building, maybe had a rest number on the picture, which is the way I can show them, so I'm hoping that we can get some, you know, find others, and I really want this out. Probably not, but I hope that we can get sort of time to handle, uh, next, you see, uh, if anybody can, I just have pictures, you know, within the next couple of months, yeah, we'll find others. Again, pictures in there, we're all involved, see, I can move, uh, I want to bring up inside of here on this is, uh, our trash service or like their, uh, truly you guys all heard, I think the first said, uh, the trash service is going south on the street of the city. Uh, I don't have a solution for these, I'm, I'm, do you do this? Uh, you know, you know, the city, uh, so-called waste management, uh, calling it's name, it may be a disaster, stuff coming to the wall, uh, they don't expect, I know that now that itself, every, uh, act of the city, for the things that would like traction on this, but, uh, speaking for my simple, we take pride in my property, city, we live in, we walk here, they got trash around the city, um, you know, possibly we're not doing their jobs, um, trash is like our city, you know, it's all in, we do, we're not like for, we've got stuff all over, and that's a work of ours. I'm hoping that we're doing something to just, uh, sure, I know, I know. I'm telling you, you gotta, you're gonna take us on this one. So, yeah. Yeah. And they're getting, they're getting, I'm gonna take a, uh, regular, uh, and start with a little, uh, the, 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 the thing. Well, I certainly don't worry in this, the days that I've been, we can go out on Monday night, and maybe six thirty minutes before, or six thirty minutes ahead, there's no line where we can live, but I know that only a lot of towns, they probably get their trash on Tuesday, maybe two times. So, uh, I'm, that's, for them, and for, anyway, somebody would please take a vote please, and pay back to me, uh, next up, we could actually, I very appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. I was gonna mention, basically, that this is gonna be, this is gonna be, oh, like, we did, for, uh, the, all the process, right? Should have, I shouldn't have. No, I haven't seen it, but it's, I guess, when it just started coming, but, yeah, you got the cannibals, you got the, so, uh, again, we're gonna try to be nasty, or, 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 uh, and, and I was kind of ashamed of me, but it came with an issue over the last, you know, month and a half, and please, I would hope anybody would come up and take a look at my, there's, there's rebar showing, there be, it's not, you know, science, can we manage that early, oh, that's, uh, I believe you're going to be timbered until we get to spring time, I'm good with it, we got ourselves. All right, thank you, you're, you're. There anyone else? I'm, 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 being nice, we always love to be, the city, we manage, we, 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 we , well, my city council, we, we, we operate here, like, the, 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 I wait to turn up, this mayor, I propose to the accessibility, simply do the, as rich. The blue, the second, we pull by our citizens. Yeah. In that, 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 Frank Ebert, our board director.
The other representative is the virtue hired, our city, uh, to go through the design process for the water and construction process as well. Uh, we went through their question, call patients process, almost in September, we actually, uh, confirmed twenty individuals down those from the front house, of course, part of, nine, seven, 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 and we did, I mean, there were three, only one proposal back, and that's, we should be, and, uh, reviewing their proposal, and, uh, reviewing their experience, I think they worked with them before, similar projects, uh, their proposal, I know, still, it's all, uh, each of me, uh, the owner of the apartment, I'm also with that basic K D G, make sure that if there was only one proposal, that wasn't going to be issued when we got to the actual goal, so we can get this first for, uh, the other representative, and then it should be this one, which called processes, not being inappropriate, which I have, that's, that might be a problem for them, if only one proposal, so, uh, with that, I mean, estimated that, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars with that, probably less than that, between now and the end of the year, with that, for an operating buddy, that was fifty R, that he started, side of the team, I can actually go with, if I'm willing to provide, so, I know, kind of what I said, if we use the amount of air, it's either outside, as I knew, that, uh, what we got left in the operating budget, going forward from point twenty-one, we have an estimated expenditure of a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and, uh, in twenty-two, twenty-three, well, we've got a lot of utility maintenance, but, or, if you estimate that, and I really, uh, saw that, this one, so, they work in many places, they have a portfolio of training, and, that's pretty much all I have at this point, I guess, if you have any questions, I'd love to discuss it.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the contract, certain season solace, or whatever, people buy a home, perfection, churches, the shooting line. Second. This is by, and, 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 and,[1262.16]
That, that, I need you to help me respond to this. Why the humidity levels?
Hey, everyone. This is Juan Dennis. I'm kind of making out what everyone is saying. It sounds like the questions about the humidity levels in the concrete floors.
Yes.
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 Sorry, it's really tough hearing everyone. So what is the general question?
We're just trying to understand the requirements seventy-five percent.
My question really is, is it normal for the concrete to retain such humidity?
I'm sorry, it's really tough making out the questions, but the, the system will fail if it's too much moisture in the substrate. And if you receive, but...
Why is the humidity level so high?
No, is it that normal for it to retain that much humidity?
Is it normal for concrete to retain humidity?
That much, that more than seven. Over the second part.
Um, I'm sorry, guys. Is that the question? Is concrete typically retain that much humidity? Uh, well, typically on new pours, um, the concrete will retain humidity for a long portion of the time. So that's where you see it on the city, I mean, the police facility side. At the city hall, um, it's just a one hundred year old building that was unconditioned for so long that that could play a part in the, the concrete holding that much humidity. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not answering the question.
Well, it's not, it's not a problem or, or it's worth that humidity over a period of time.
The epoxy that they're putting over that is...
If it's a, if it's a question about the quality of the concrete that we've installed, the concrete that we've installed has been through testing and it has exceeded every requirement. So that's, that's not an issue.
For your license to approve change order point six, point seven, and point eight of the observatory system. Please.
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bradley? Yes. Wood? Yes. Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
On the third quarter, twenty twenty financial report.
Mayor Campbell, twenty twenty quarter. These are course reports that we gave to the council. There is that number, uh, that number thirty. Those are cabinet report, which are determined in the venture, uh, project in the minimum. How is our estimate that we use when we're putting in twenty twenty one budget? We, we do some, uh, standards, and it sure is, okay, there was, there was one done in the, in the budget. Then there's reportedly the insurance part, and it shows our cash at the end of the quarter, and that's published. In the, in the paperwork, which is, and the, the shares are just starting to... Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any, any questions from certain staff? Alicia? And then I'll make a quick motion. Mr. General Counsel, should we shift to four, five, four, four? Second. So, look, I can't confirm that second. Uh, what do you think, Sir? Want to thank Dylan for the handover for the clear insight.
What he did.
The rendition, thank you. I don't see nothing else, so please.
Putting on emotions like that is going to be very difficult for someone.
Yes.
Bradley? Yes. Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Mackey?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson, yes.
On that, number four, representation of the town. Okay, ninety-nine dollars.
Mayor Campbell, twenty twenty quarter. Um, we have a ninety-nine dollars nine number, but we, we live on the platform or virtually empty potash. We will, uh, we have a potash nine. We should exceed, uh, the government body number. Should be at each, uh, desk in the hardware.
Could you please, my, my office, my office, please, please, two thousand and ninety potash? I'll briefly go over our audit on these. Uh, on the standard required, the re-created, third, I completely agree with the money more. Audit process, uh, if you refer to the letter, uh, several page letter, helping to apply for that over and address some details. Uh, there's a few pieces in this letter that I want to review. The first is on the bottom of the first page, and notes that we did not emphasize how our changes in current policies. The other item is that we did not identify any undue work. On the second page, the, the, my several estimates that are included are current policies. These are the other forms of climate that are applying to the place. The impact on the liability, compensating, keeping liability, and protecting the valuable assets. Then on the third page, we noted that we were able to, uh, the uncorrect status included in the city's final decision. The goal for our audit is to ensure compliance with the regulations to ensure that the actual controls are in place, concrete protection, and that the binding factors reflect the health and records for decision. I had a report that the managers get all of these three questions, and we did not identify any inferior provisions used during our audit. Next, uh, is the binding factors in our audit report, the under report to the state of the city's audit. But most importantly, the opinion that we issued. The opinion to the banner of the first, on the last page of contract, uh, bottom of the last paragraph on the first page in the binding factors. And we issued an unqualified opinion, which is the highest of those opinions the city can receive, and speak very highly of the company. In closing, I want to thank all of the city staff that we worked with this year, as some of us said it was the first year on it. A audit is always a two times a week for an entity, but sadly, on the first year with brand new offers, until the end of the staff were strictly normal during audit, it was very bad. And through your product meeting, and I would go forward with that each time. Very much.
You may. Please, watch. What can we tell the citizens?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm waiting, what's the, the twenty nineteen audit?
The little, they're really excited about how the contract. What can we say in terms of policy?
Oh, what?
There's a lot of it.
Yeah.
They're making further details, more so, more, uh... Was there any suggestions at all, any changes in, in this way of, of, of taking all of the rules?
We have some comments that we issued, uh, to the end of the year, the community recommendations. And we did know, uh, a couple items, uh, but other than the levels, uh, we took, we got three different levels of, uh, so we can know the strongest, the weakest, the third, uh, lower than that is the security. And then on the bottom here, for more total differences, and if, if you happily consider progress. We, closer. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes. This is your first year of, uh, with us. And now the first year of the speech, uh, following, uh, appreciate, and we decided, uh, review all of the factors to see how we can do. Thank you, our state.
Fine, I'm watching the, the twenty nineteen audit. Wood?
Yes.
First, it's, yes. Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
They're good, thank you. Okay, I didn't remember that, something happened before you spoke, so you might need to talk to us.
There's a great call. Mayor, I hope there's like a, uh, full accomplishment for you, brother. Uh, first, I'm going to, I'm definitely, I don't have the stress in my head, and I'm probably prepared for it, I'm going to do it. I say lots of comments, there are, I'm hoping it's just about, but, um, so this particular architect is featured with a quick sign on the main stretch and the lawn bed building.
So, um, is I can.
Yeah.
We get. They don't. You know, everything is. So, your motion to approve this, you have to. Then you draw my discussion.
Sir.
The Louvre got. But the. Our. Are here. You know, this is.
Uh, are things balanced having your city budget?
There. No, there's a lot, um, we already children on several parts from, but, um, I could not get one level of speed at all. So as well, and that is why we're actually being stated because it's federal budget. Um, we are required.
So we said three people. Thousand dollars.
Right.
And.
So, how are this, are you starting to this from the over topic? Um, we. So far, not, I'm, I have, um, couple weeks. Um, the residents all have the chance, so they're cleaning their own stacks to make sure, you know, trying to flush last or, um, just hope to make sure that. It doesn't happen anytime. I got one to the thing always, uh, if it happens in the back when going to, where they're going, we start now, who's done it all this, that's not what she for, but. I did not want to move the lot from us and all this, and I thought, you know, I don't, my goal was to not.
Well, I'm quite conservative on the, uh, making their country displaced.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but you actually, Louvre got that before you were doing one. Turn it, before they're, uh, use their whole step.
Uh, they will probably come back that end. Honestly, with that, I've even on the end and they think I'm crazy, that I can just. Running back, which is my fault. Um, again, I can know how to work and tell they, you got the team and we see the, but that's a. Uh, either way, they're coming back to me, like, they're not, they're not looking at all without service.
And would they just put the beyond people, especially in that, in the, that can be, they just.
Yes, we will have to, the, the twins is the only area that will make, so the last move they're trying to do out, um, and then no, you will be moving their. Um, and going on the kitchen floor.
But they are just floating.
That, right. Yep. Yeah, yeah, it's a little, and, um, it's really good, because the water can be, normally, they're not being moved. So that's really why they didn't need it, uh, but you could suddenly go in and grab something typically when I had a place. Uh, mine, we do that early now, early in the season, or we can see someone's not there currently. Uh, but typically they eat, uh, plastic and they're too, and too raised that from the kitchen, the living room. So any dust and all that doesn't flow and hard because of cause. It's basically kitchen and then you get that.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, your question, uh, there's no change, it makes it look very reasonable, those set by bed or you had it for a while, they can pick into account expenses of this project.
Um, no, those are external, how anything to be with the process, process. But, um, and they're, they don't have anything to do with that project.
But this isn't one you can even, uh, are there other units also in similar situations with their.
So this is the third building that we found on it, um, but. Two of them were in one building and then we had another, the building, so we got the whole from the two in front of building. Um, what we're finding in the building is settling and they did it with an extraordinary bar when they built a building, um. And they're all settling and working and the last one, it was not as destructive, I mean, this is fire. It usually been. Couple thousand, uh, and the last ones, the building was mainly about the, so. I'm predicting that, that I'm not, there's two buildings left, so, um. We have. And we have, I don't know. Those who fight for our, and it, it came out of nowhere, I guess it started flooding, it's about one week and. I'm, that's not normal and that's not, 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 so I don't know, I don't know if the company grow out, or I took so long, we just landed on.
Great, I just wondered if we were to say camera that I just told you before.
Yeah, for sure.
May I hear your question? Do you not vote please?
Willing to approve the P A D A, meaning any one of the contracts, please?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Really, yes, one, yes, very much.
Very good, I understand, so we have, before we begin, we're live building.
Yeah, that's good, this is the H I C, this is the first, uh, this is our, um, annual. I can, I don't care for it, it's just our market and liability insurance, and this is the same company that we've done. I did not do this year, this is everything going on, also, I wanted to, which is crazy, I did not, this section, I mean, what I thought, they don't want to land up at seven hundred dollars a month share. Um, last year, I think the price was about four hundred dollars a revenue and then share is forty two hundred. Uh, I did give a letter from them stating that they were charging all their contracts, um, and into charge should. Be an increase or something like that, well, their fees didn't increase, so the last article is about our, that percentage more, um, so I'm thinking, I'm sorry, you're seeing the. For not so drastic, I think this, this year, uh, until we, this, this. Our company.
Does it say it's a picture? And you got it, I understand.
That's very, I'm going to do it today, twenty twenty one, I will be protecting your contract.
Sir. So Louvre got. But, uh, they got, uh, don't you? Is it official?
Yeah.
That's what Louvre said.
Thank you for giving it to us. Why? Thank you.
I would like to.
Thompson?
Yes.
Really, yeah. Stevens?
Yes.
Mike, Maggie?
Yes.
Wood?
Yeah.
Yes.
My name was.
Very good, Maggie. I'm just, I'm just, right there, so we, we still.
Maybe, um, some P H I C. Um, so this is the beginning of the new, I don't know, then we see you work, we do, we put on, so you get this required, but. Essentially, it's totally allowed, it's, it's a very unique. This time, I think, on the grand, because they're twelve over easily. One around a month and there, it's totally allowed to one hundred fifty, then that hundred fifty, take off that four hundred, and then we, uh, two fifty four. So essentially, we got it, and every year, um, whoever does, um, a study, they, they get all the, all the months, you could build from all of their units, right then. And averages, that, 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 these calls, so unless when we see the proposed utility allowance for each unit and then the change of what happening. Um, they decrease and the utility allowance. Make one. Directly to further, um, and then they're. Yeah.
You're not, you know, on the stick? You have that? Mayor, I think Louvre approved P A J, uh, twenty twenty one, building. Louvre got. And next, I would like to, uh, please?
Thompson?
Yes. Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yeah.
Very much.
Very good, this, this is the overall, in case, um, you got into part of the film, uh, second, so, um, in, uh, by. We told, uh, but, uh, he said to the public, he said, the podcast. On that item number nine, something kind of forty twenty two, very hard, I, please, get all the questions people to be aware of that.
Mayor, I'm proposing, you're going to be. And this is the final one, another thing, one of the, for the, this is the certain value, but they could turn the area, we have. And then we have, our, our market rates less than eighty percent, but they didn't, their, their number rates to be. Um, and then for the family units, the utility allowance also comes into the plan, so originally on the proposed, um. Ranks for the, the studio owners, they are not taking out utility allowance because we gave the, so they're. Would be eighty percent of the. Um, and then two, three, four, whatever, the utility allowance that we just approved is the target of the eight percent and then I suggested flat rate. Flat rate, because we, um, I have to pay this often, that the program is very, very certification, they can choose their, uh, rents. Income based round them, or they can choose the flat rate function, uh, and sometimes they're not going to income based. Ranks as high as, even on the clock, it could be, so that she's gone, so everything they do, certainly, it's also much. So.
Uh, one of the next things that we're, we, uh. Need to be, uh, uh. Just, uh, previous, uh, fact. Anything else? That? Mayor, making motion to approve P A J twenty twenty one, fair market rates.
Sure.
The Louvre got. So there. Should they, they can see for reasons, right, obviously, now, my ability to more. Very good, no other questions, first comment, both please?
Very, yes, Wood?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes. Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Yes.
Sam, what's that?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
On TV, uh, for, the TV star, uh, uh, just really quickly, uh, to point out. You know, we did have a proper three drive through, then we, and, uh, I can say that there were. About three hundred and fifty kids, and all that, who were there, I know I got there about twenty minutes after it started, and, uh, a hundred people. Kids, or, um. Uh, great, then, a lot of, this is in there, um, this is in our town, um, maybe. I do want to know, the library, it's also having their annual food action, and, um, coming as well, so. Something to do, um. That's still going on, but this is. Uh, along with the library, the city, uh, did they notify by election issue, last week or so, about, like, owl hawks out here? Originally, that's, that'd be, but it's a all, um, the first thing going on, certainly didn't want to have that, this location. So, uh, the library is where the owl hawks have, um, correct information out there as part of this location, they did locate it at the library, I can walk in. Big owl hawks, line up. Um, was ringing me in my last, uh, when the, uh, people are granted ability going back, there's one whole timeframe started, um, second, so we can. Service, uh, following day, third, Wednesday day, uh, we do, uh, prepare. Pre-prepare. Very, very good, um, that is. Actually go, uh, first.
Is that also eight to four thirty?
Eight thirty four. What's your question?
It's on, let's imagine if it was eight thirty or four thirty.
Or, that's, that's, yes, maybe it's. Yeah, so we'll be going back, because the normal, normal business of ours are already on the second. Beyond that, that's why, um. They're getting, pretty extended chat off. Porced with all the. Did you count? I tried. Boy, I never got it, I think it was like, first, that's. To tomorrow, hey? Congressman Marshall, who's elected for U S N, will be at Third Space, I don't, this, they did in Third Space, coffee. Tomorrow, uh, at seven thirty, uh, till the eight, along with, uh, Senator Braun and a former Senator, uh, Sam. Uh, I think, but I'm blank, any of them there, uh, another thing I've noticed is we only, uh, we can get enough of them. One that you can bring in, if anybody's worried about those, you can vote, you vote on voting day, you can request physical ballot, they can see that you, uh. You requested, and, and still vote on voting day, we like, we're sitting at around fifty four percent of citizens, I mean, the bike. Something mentioned, our box has been installed at the library, uh, you can play your ballot in there at any point in time, but for anybody that isn't aware, it changes your physical ballot, and then I feel like. Kind of wrong. Um, with that, everybody, ever low, good guy, right? Do you say the first step?
Uh, yes, uh, ministers, uh, fellowship. Put together, the unity, for the, the, uh, on the, uh, third, and the purpose of that is to show us in our. Uh, we have freedom in this country, and what it concerns us, you know, so much, our freedom is, is that we, we are individuals and we have certain things. And freedom is that we can have those, uh, but it seems that that's turning into a, I'm not a cop. Here's, so this is, so this is, and so I think this is an important thing that. These churches, these congregations are doing, I think, to show. Or show you, uh, we as are, we have, it's not a lot of visits that they've seen, and, like, so the ministers and the congregations are going to continue to. Try to show that, and, uh, so the ministers will have some points, and they'll speak to, there'll be prayer, uh. It'll be, uh, six p.m., I mean, one or second, I'm in C A, talking a lot, and, uh, again, by everybody, uh, there will be. Showing you, and, uh, I appreciate you, priest of, I don't know about typical transit, in the city during that, that's a long, so, and extended time.
Congratulations.
I appreciate the amount of work going into all of these, and everything, for people to have. Sean, can we speak to the. Conversations that are, that are built, it's happening, so, like, you're, all of these, removal, I know they have, did. Is that, make them, they can share with us? Useful to us?
Um, so, the city that we're building was on its own contract. We are part of, I don't think, like, contract, part of ways. Uh, so, just, uh, make that clear, the, the city, the buyer, is with that contract, or basically at the counter, so, uh. Oftentimes, that's where some of the issues come up with us being able to have this, uh, as far as our question is concerned. Get put into the county down, this, that then goes to waste management, I think we talked in the past, and always know, waste management, you, we are in some legal. Uh, disputes or, um, matters related to that solid waste contract, so, um, just to make that clear, city that we're building, again, it's on its own, so they had a contract with. Uh, I can't speak to its land, only to simply say that they would go out, I think they have a, I want to say half dozen, uh, contractors, um. They'll allow their information to that, the biggest difference, I will say, that you will find, pretty far apart, is, uh, is that what we have in our, and the county generally. Is a service that is highly labor. Uh, where basically you can throw anything out on your curb, and they have. Uh, we'll worry, people, both, you know, separate pieces, that out there, so again, uh, that's the main difference. We were to go away from our contractor, waste management, that's the county, is that then, what they typically do is they have their own designated, say, this hand, if one's in garbage, you have one free site. Uh, that's based, your cost, your services based off of that inside, and there's different ways to do that, generally, that's, that's the modern way, uh, that's all the way towards. That allows the contractor, uh, solid waste contractor, have one person on the group, go out there, take their warrant, pick up the truck, and set a whole dumper, but that, uh, extremely efficient cost. Ours is completely. Uh, which is why they're polite. Uh, so that's always kind of in, I think, same point, is that we were to go away in the county contract, it would, it would be a decrease in service and what it likely. Uh, the cost would likely, are is cheaper than what it, the bill's cost is currently with waste management, so, I haven't even an eye on it, uh, we did have a presentation. Well, a couple of weeks ago, uh, after that, there are these, uh, there was a review, and I don't have a lot of information. Uh, I hope they're not trying to do that, or like, next year, late next year, and some, yeah, or, uh, videos with it, so. Again, uh, legal issues with, and the county, uh, concerns with all sorts of, uh, things, uh, we are sort of trying to see what else about it, of course, trying to fill the line of. You know, again, what sort of started getting, and change that, where we, we're being, so, and second, council wise, uh. Yeah, I'm on.
And it, for us to work with it, we decide, and show us, that, 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 most people sense we would have to, we'd be.
I don't believe so, I think there's a notice requirement that we have to get, uh. I don't remember what that is off the top of my head, but why do we call this, this contract, and you don't seem to play on, so we waste management, why be part of that contract?
Thank you.
Yes.
Like, does the, it'll, it'll, between, um, service, are there protocols, like, say, protocols, like, certain.
Yes, it is, in fact, the buses, at the beginning and the end of each shift, we have physical barriers, uh. The, the contractor, the driver, and the passenger, uh, the distance, how many passengers they can pick up, but they have to maintain distance from the bus, and everyone is required to wear masks.
Okay, and then is the, uh, uh. Maggie, talk about.
If you, now, sitting in the van, about, looking into the one line, and the photo view, you can see if you've been received, and you can also see if it's fit, et cetera. Uh, I'd like to, be exact, in mind, and I would receive it, et cetera. But concerning, that's the best place to go. Is that?
Uh, one question on the current enforcement, is looking at that, this, when I see the little, uh, pin mark, there's a back, can't see there, I just was wondering if there's some way that we can have a little more information, something like that. Those, I haven't called that. So. Dirk, we're trying to watch that, work with Mark, and, so, I don't want to duplicate necessarily, so that he's done, like, that.
Yeah, and, and a lot of the, and it's, you see on there, uh, a lot of, one issue on them, so that's, there's. Very quick, one quick step. Okay, but, yes, thank you all, appreciate the, the, the evening, as far as, before we go on, and we're. We have a report, um, uh, P A D A, uh. Executive Director, for, he, uh, initiated a lot of issues, that, um, like, we'll be going, work with groups, uh, next year, and. Uh, we can handle, uh, from, uh, global, and. Uh, those who are a bit specific. Andrea? Look, uh, other than that, I think so, that if you're going to have an opportunity to fill out this census, I. Will be starting to get it, and, and how that, uh, this is, uh, will be affecting us, and the data that is requested, uh, in the near future, for the, uh, also, uh. For those who think that this could be able to vote, and we have to, uh, leave tomorrow, so please take the opportunity to vote, uh, if you have a mental order. Other than that, I would stand for, uh, uh, there's nineteen eighteen building, uh. Please, they, if there's, if there's, coming along, just, funny link, uh, breaking, one injury, back going, or whatever, they call that. Sure. We could get it on, but, they, they have some others, it's, certainly, you can't, because of the bus that keeps cracking, I think, the pieces, have it. But, uh, we're. The, we're, I mean, after, we're not. It includes the standard report, um, there are pictures on there that show the, you know, working to build, uh, police department, and, uh, nineteen eighty building, those are available, uh, as well as previous, uh, standard reports where it included, uh, same information, obviously, for the photos, so. Uh, at this point, the, uh, police department is slated to get through all the, uh, unsolicited items, uh, as far as, until the end, middle of November, optimistically. Uh, a lot of little parts, parts involved in that, uh, the city hall portion is still, about that, I think, maybe wary, very wary, uh, but again, that's all, uh. Predated on a night weather, like, today, and, uh, sure, we can, we can, so, uh, but again, I try to, at least on monthly basis, see if, that I see, that's, 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 that's the picture, it's, uh, the, the recording, what's going on. Uh, and Eric, because Tom drew there last week, well, um, so, anybody in council, like, it's, hopefully, that, I, you know, what we're saying, I'm happy for them. A real lot of pictures, I, it is, that's two weeks before that, and it has changed quite a bit, and it was two weeks, and, uh. Some of the, the, they, they, they're, 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 like, so. Unless there's anything else, I think.